Roll call, please, Mrs. Larson.
Yes. Dr. Beer?
Here.
Dr. Khan?
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
Mr. Alexanderovich?
Here.
Mrs. Winkowski?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item four, school presentation. Before I do that, I would like to recognize our new HR Director, Ms. Laura Dahmeras. Welcome.
Thank you.
Meeting, thank you. Sorry. Robinwood Elementary, Mr. Nelson. And congratulations are in order.
Yes, congratulations.
Robinwood is one of nine schools in the state to be awarded a blue ribbon, a blue ribbon school. So, we're really proud of you, thank you.
Thank you for that.
I don't think it's on.
Can everyone hear me?
Surprise it's not.
Try one more time. Do a hard reboot.
What's that?
Turn it on.
Doesn't seem to be on. Okay.
You could perhaps pick up.
Could turn this one around.
Yeah, take that one. Or stand near it if you would.
Like this? Oh, there we go. So, first of all, thank you. It's an honor for the staff, the students, the families to be recognized in that way. And it just really represents the work that we've done here in Franklin, I think Robinwood does. And we're just really excited about that. So, so thank you. So, good evening, members of the school board, district administrators, our staff here, of course, our students, and our families. Tonight, we want to share a little bit about our school improvement plan and our tactics, and a little bit of how some of the things we do in order to help meet our school improvement goals. So, tonight, we're going to show you how we work towards meeting our school improvement goals. And at Robinwood, we're working to know our impact, we're working to take action on that impact. And then, we're overall, we're really working to build our student-teacher relationships. We really focus there because we know we have to have those strong student-teacher relationships in order to be successful with all of our kids. So, our improvement work, our improvement work that you're going to hear about tonight really hits all of the values that we have here in Franklin. But I really wanted to listen through a lens of well-being tonight, and really think about how our writing process that we're going to share really supports getting to know our kids and who they are, and what values they bring to our classroom. So, that's really going to be the work of this evening that you're going to get to hear about. So, tonight, we have here Mr. Noton and Mrs. Yankee, who co-served one of our fourth-grade classrooms. And then, we have Avery Bronsted. You can raise your hand or something. Kavi Gray. Achintia Reddy. And Rachel Sunstrom. So, I want to welcome all of them for being brave and coming here tonight to show you some of the great work we're doing at Robinwood. So, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Noton and Mrs. Yankee.
All right, so, kind of starting our presentation, we're going to overview our writing unit. The first thing I wanted to kind of convey is that as a school, me and Mrs. Yankee are both members of our school improvement team. And one thing we've really stressed as a school improvement team over the last few years is trying to raise our student engagement scores. So, one way we decided to do that this year was really try to get to know all of our students in a different setting, other than just having those informal conversations, and try to get to know them better as learners, and also as people through their learning. And that one tactic that we're really trying to push this year is to create like a more positive classroom community. And one way we decided to do that this year was really to use the students' writing and try to get to know them as people during the writing unit. Especially in the first one, which Mrs. Yankee's going to overview right now.
Yes. So, our first unit is the arc of the story where we are writing narrative fiction. And what's great about this is the students will get to utilize their narrative skills that they have built on thus far to really build those advanced writing habits. And what's great about this first unit is the students can write stories that matter to them by thinking about books and characters that they really love, and what matters to them, and how they want to tell their own story. And just really giving them the choice to get to know them as learners as well as students.
So, our unit typically begins with an on-demand. So, that's when we are initially going to look at students and see kind of what they're bringing as far as writers at the beginning of the year. Students usually have about a forty-five-minute window to do this. So, we give them a topic, we give them a piece of paper, and say, "Off you go, we want to see how you are as writers." And if you look at pages one and two in your packet, it kind of highlights this a little bit. It has an example of the prompt in there that we used this year. So, the first prompt we used this year was to write a personal narrative that tells a story of one time in your life. So, we kind of purposely leave it a little broad so we can get to know the students a little bit more. And some of the things we kind of discovered during, while the students were writing and reading them over, after, you know, we learned about their families, some interests, vacations they had been on, what sports they played, things that are issues that are important to them in their lives, or things we initially learned about them within the first, what was that? The first three or four days of the school year, we already had learned that just based on their writing.
And then, I'd like to highlight On Demand. So, this is a tool that was given to us, we do work closely with our district culture. And this is a tool that she gave us, so well, the students for writing the On Demand. Myself and Mr. Noton are walking around. And this really helps us get to know them as writers, to see what areas are they really striving for, and how can we have kids in groups to really hone in on what they need more as individuals. So, this is a great tool to understand, to really help us with, on page one is the writing process, which students do use throughout the units of study, to really kind of hone in on what do they really need, and how can we meet them, where they are at. Okay.
So, the first thing, so we do the On Demand, we have the students write. We go through this tool, which is brand-new to us this year.
Yes.
I mean, we're constantly trying to learn things in the classroom, and try to improve as teachers, to really kind of get to the work right away and not waste a lot of time. So, as soon as that On Demand's done, we move into the idea generation portion. So, that's when we ask the writers, especially in this first unit, to write down as many possible stories that mean something, something to them as possible. So, students kind of have a lot of choice in how they do this. They generate multiple story ideas. We had kids, you know, three, four, five different ideas that they felt, that they could craft into an entire piece by the end of the year. So, we're going to have Rachel share her idea generation, which is going to be on page, was that five, I believe? Yeah, look at page five, Rachel's going to share how she kind of did her idea generation during that first stage.
Can you hold that mic real close to Rachel so everyone can hear? Perfect.
Hi, my name is Rachel, and I'm here to share with you about how I generated ideas for narrative, for my narrative fiction piece. This is how I planned. I used Post-Its to stay organized and decided to do my ideas with some truth. I'm going to share some of my ideas now. One idea is about a girl going to Iceland. The reason why I did that is because I went to Iceland a couple of years ago. Another idea I have is about someone who moves and has to make new friends. My third idea is about someone who, on their first day of school, is nervous and has to make new friends. But my final idea is about someone who goes camping and with their cousins. And these are my ideas, thank you for listening.
So, that's like a perfect example, Rachel listed, of how a student now, we take from an On Demand to having four solid ideas, that's something she could write about. But also, from our point of view, it tells us a lot about who she is as a person, and things we might have in common with her that we could talk about, to kind of form those connections.
Yeah, and it really definitely showcases, so, we really give students choices and say, "Off you go." So, what's really great is Rachel decided to come up with her own system with different Post-Its. Some kids do T-charts. It's really about like where she is at in the writing process and as a writer, for her to be able to showcase what she really likes to do with that choice. All right, so next, after generating ideas, students move into that rehearsal. And during this stage, they portray out different story arcs. They can be written, they can be oral, and where they want to select their idea, their small moment in time, to make sure that they have four to five scenes with their story. And so, we have Avery and Kavi will talk about the process and how they chose to work during the rehearsal stage of the writing process.
Hi, my name is Avery Bronsted. Hi, my name is Avery Bronsted, and I'm going to be sharing with you how I came up with my idea for my writing piece. So, I use Post-Its to stay organized, and it helps me see clearer in my writing. So, a lead is where you introduce your character and you set the scene. My charac- my character is Callie, and she's at the doctor's office at the last day of summer. She has to go to school tomorrow, but she's embarrassed because she has a bald spot on her head, and she doesn't want anyone to make fun of her. The doctor told her that she could get shots in her head to help her hair grow back, or shave her head. Callie remembers that it's just hair and it's going to grow back. So, she, Callie decides to shave her head. Ending, she's happy when she sees her friend shaved her head. Two, Callie learns to never give up and be happy with who you are. Thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is Kavi Gray. I want to share with you how I planned my writing, my writing. To plan my story, I used a story arc, a story arc. My story has five parts. My story is about a boy named AJ and his mom. The problem in the story is that they don't have enough money for college. I want to share my story arc with you. So, the lead is, the character's mom and AJ. And AJ doesn't have enough money for college. The next part of my story is AJ's dad leaves him two weeks ago and only leaves him with $200. The next part is the mom opens overdue bills but doesn't write. So, they get kicked out of the house. AJ is trying to get a job. The next part, the character has a tough decision. Mom, the mom has to, has a lot of people. Mom has a fundraiser, a lot of people donate, over 68 million people donate. The engine is that they have enough money for AJ to go to college.
So, then the last part of our writing process is the flash draft. So, this is kind of where it all comes together. So, we start with the idea generation, the students take one solid idea, then they draft that story arc that you'll see in your packet. Then they kind of bring it all together in flash draft. So, they think about that small moment in time, and how they're going to write a whole story about that small idea. We kind of encourage the kids to, instead of taking like an entire idea, like going to Disney World, we wanted to cut it down to a small moment when they get to fourth grade, and really kind of work on some skills while they're doing that. And also, between these last two stages, typically, we pull kids in strategy groups and conference with them one-on-one to kind of build their writing skills, based on what we noticed at the beginning. So, Achintia's going to share a part of his flash draft for you.
Hi, my name is Achintia Reddy. I am going to explain flash draft writing. Now that I generated ideas and rehearsed them using a story arc, after that I was ready to flash draft, I wanted, I would like to explain about my flash draft. How I flash drafted, I took the first scene of, and put it, put it on the, on the top of my page, and this helped me or be organized. I know it is important to include action dialogue and feeling in each scene. A little bit of my writing is, this is where the action was. This is where the thought was. I thought, yes, I escaped. Luckily, no one saw me. And, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you look at that picture up there, you can see Achintia writing the strategy he used, where he took a part of his story arc and literally put it right on a piece of paper, so he could kind of logistically follow what was going to happen next.
And if you look on the writing process, so, we are in the middle of revision and editing. It's just we haven't gotten that far just yet at the beginning of this school year. But we really do want to thank these students for coming out as well. I know they were a little nervous. But it's really great to start the year off well, like really meeting them and knowing who they are as students, but as writers, to really get them to that fourth-grade level. And I'm really proud of them for coming out here and speaking in front of people. I know it's a big accomplishment.
So, I'm going to have just a little clip playing here, so you can kind of live in Mrs. Yankee, Mrs. Yankee's and Mr. Noton's writers workshop. And as you're watching it, when you are visiting a writing workshop, just now, hopefully, you can see a little glimpse in this, not just that they're writing, but they're sharing a piece of who they are with us. And I'm hoping you're able to see how this lets us know our impact on them as writers and as staff, and how you can kind of see how we can take action on some of the things they shared, to know where to go further with them next. So, as we're building those strong relationships right away with students, that's what writing, the writing process does allow us to do. So, hopefully, by you just listening to the students just this evening a little bit, you are able to see a window into their lives and who they are as, as little Robinwood students. So, thank you all for having us. Thank you to Mr. Noton, thank you to Mrs. Yankee, and again, of course, thank you to our students for being brave and sharing their writing with us. So, thank you all. Questions, or I don't know where we are on time.
Anybody have any questions?
Just one, so, how many years have we been doing the writers workshop? Because they come into fourth grade, and they all feel like they're very comfortable with some of the terms and process.
Year seven, right?
This is year seven?
Year seven, I believe. It's six or seven. We started writing first, then we started reading workshop a year later.
Okay, great.
And does writing, writers workshop happen daily?
Yes.
Okay. Wow, it is hard to write that much every day, and to start the year right off with forty-five minutes of an On Demand. I, good job, sweet ass, good job, fourth graders.
My stamina goes into early work.
Oh, okay. And it's all handwritten, you know, no key wording yet, right? Or?
We move to that eventually, but at this stage, we actually prefer that the kids are writing it down in their notebooks. But eventually this year, we do kind of introduce publishing pieces a little bit more, and typing things, just skills that they'll need going forward.
Sometimes that idea generation gets slowed down. Keyboarding, it does seem like that red line. So, we really want our kids to really think and flash draft and get their ideas down and not be slowed down by technology on the writing process.
Sure helps with the editing, though, right?
Yep.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you.
I think we always tell them if they want to leave.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot for coming, kids. We'll give you a moment to leave if you'd like to before we get on with the meeting.
And there are days when I can't write for forty-five minutes. Can I look at this? You know, the scene? This process, we're about to see. It's really, it's really.
It's more concrete.
It's really, yeah. It's good stuff. Compared to the earlier methods. Yeah.
I think I'm going to have them. I think I'm going to have them sit at the table here and use that microphone. I don't know if that helps you. All right, item five, we'll move to community comment. Participants under this agenda item must be residents of the Franklin Public School District or parents, guardians of Franklin Public School District students, and must limit their statements to three minutes with a maximum of fifteen minutes for any and all comment. If the community comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a statement or question that does not relate to an agenda item per Board Policy Administrative Rules 8300. Adam Wittenberg is the first person. Mr. Wittenberg, please.
Do you want me to sit down?
Please.
All right, my name is Adam Wittenberg. As I stated last time, I'm an IT contractor. And I know you can't respond, but regarding the masks, part of my job is to advocate for my customers and clients around the Midwest. Going into their business, troubleshooting, and figuring out what's going on, and dealing with X company and Y company regarding their network, their infrastructure, and understanding the big picture, whether it's a auto dealership, a medical facility, a retail store. I go into all different types of businesses. So, I have to look at the bigger picture, and then advise them on which direction to go. Or if it's troubleshooting, work with all the other companies to come up with a solution that works, and to fix things. So, I say that in regards to the masks. Last year, we did virtual, just so our kids didn't have to deal with the whole craziness of it. And this year, I thought I was going to subside, but it did not. And our kids are social, they like to be around other kids. So, looking into that, I saw what they were saying on the news and other medical doctors and everything, but what I had found out is most people in the medical field, doctors, nurses, are not certified or qualified to talk about masks. There is actual special professions that get certified in airborne pathogen and training doctors and medical staff, or medical techs, on how to use masks properly. Doctors typically, and nurses, go through mask fitting once a year. Where the team comes in, they put on an N95 mask, and they do smell testing and make sure it's fitting properly. So, like for myself, I will fail every single ma- mask test because of my beard. I can't make a seal around my face for protection, which means wearing a mask is completely irrelevant. Furthermore, you talk to environmental hygienists, or those that are in hazmat field, will tell you that cloth masks, paper masks are never used to prevent infections from viruses. What they do create, though, is a breeding ground for a whole host of other bacteria and viruses when the masks are on your face. And surgeons typically get their masks replaced every two hours because of what can start growing within that humid environment as they're breathing in and out. But they don't wear them for protection for viruses, it's more for fluids and stuff.
Thank you.
All right, I'll continue next time.
Emily Fertida. I hope I got your name right tonight.
Hi. Parent of two, I moved my kids to Bayline and Mesquite. I'm hoping to be able to come back to the school district with my other two. But it's pending, and the reason why is because of your guys' decisions that you've made here about masks, and the future is probably going to be about vaccine mandates, because, I mean, obviously, it seems like it's headed that way. But I just wanted to make a note and just pass this along. There's a, I just was reading about the Wisconsin rules for calling a special vote with you guys. It's three percent of the electorate. In order to do that, it's not very many votes. I just found out that that's only around fifty, or it's actually fewer than fifty people would need to sign a petition to be able to, be able to talk to you guys. And we would have more than three minutes to be able to talk about what we want on our agenda. So, I am reading the work, and I'm figuring it, how, how to work you guys and get, get our way. Because we, the people, are needing to have a voice here. Our children are the silliest people to make masks. It's just crazy. I was driving here, and I passed a bunch of kids not wearing masks. It's the exception, not the rule. To have kids masked in school is the exception, not the rule. You're in Aldi, or Target, or one of our local baseball games, or, I mean, I saw pictures of you guys just walking around. It's okay. I'm not mad at you for doing it, because it's totally normal to want to breathe like a normal person. But to do this to our little children, it trains them in the weirdest way. And I don't know what the outcome is, and I don't think you do either. But it's worrisome that you would want to do this to our kids. You're teaching them not to play. It's weird. We got to do better. Mesquite is doing awesome. There's nobody dying of COVID. Who's heard of all the deaths in Mesquite? All these kids dying, oh my gosh! It's not happening. It's not happening in Oak Creek. It's not happening. We're sandwiched between normal people doing normal things. And I walk around, and I see you guys asking us to do weird things to children. It's weird what you're asking to do. So, I just want to call attention to the strangeness of having the tiniest people who have the lowest chance of dying. You die, more kids die of Tylenol overdoses, that's for real. I mean, that's a true, that's true. People have been overdosing on Tylenol, that's why you're not allowed to get recommendations, yet you're supposed to call your actual doctor for a recommendation. I'm sure you remember putting a kid to bed and being like, "How much Tylenol?" It won't give you a recommendation, because so many kids died from Tylenol. And here we are, talking about four hundred kids in seventy-three million. That's a loony statistic. It's so weird what you're asking us to swallow. Anyway, I'll be back. Unfortunately.
Lori Pandey.
Good evening. We're the Pandays, and wanted to quickly just talk about a couple of things. The beliefs. We have a couple of tenants here of your, of your school district. Beliefs and equity. And one of the beliefs we want to talk about is the science is settled. And all I'm going to say is two names and move on. Galileo and Pramagupta. And as far as equity, we want to talk a little bit about what we're going through in terms of virtual schooling, because that is the equitable option that was created for people with different beliefs. That would be us.
So, the first issue that we did get and are able to join the live lessons, which has been a great help to me, is actually a lot better since the last time we've been here. The problem is today, he signed in, was trying to go to the teacher that he's been going to consistently, because you can pick from various teachers. And his teacher is no longer an option anymore. She's really good and no longer an option. If you're in Akron, Ohio, sure, you can get her, but we can't get her anymore because she's been doled out to Akron, Ohio, and no other students. So, I notified Ed Menton that I'm very disappointed. You know, my child has built a relationship with her, I think she's very good. Some of these other teachers are just, I feel kind of mailing it in and just doing the job so they can be done with their lesson and get a little break. So, I don't know. So I don't know what you can do about that, but I'm not very happy. So now we have to find a new teacher, start over again, find one that's good and that we can work with. The problem, second problem, that I did email to Dr. Mo, Dr. Mueller, about a reading assessment and trying to get a reading assessment for my child so I know where is he. I know at the end of last year, which reading level he ended on. And now I don't really know where he is. The response that I got back is, this is really not the same, but you could use the MAP assessment, which the MAP assessment, you're right, is not the same. That is different. It won't, I don't think Flatow will tell me he's reading at this level because that's not really what the test is designed to do. The other issue that I have with the MAP assessment, so I did call the ECC and I talked to Josh. My son has to wear a mask in order to take the MAP assessment. I said, well, I'm sorry, but the reason we are virtual is because I don't want my son wearing a mask. So we're out. We're not doing this MAP test. So I can't get the assessment, which I'm fine with, but I really do want a reading assessment, which I'm having a hard time doing. So inequity here. My third point is I loved hearing from the kids about the writer's workshop. There haven't been any writers workshops with Ed Menton. My son had them last year. I'm going to the library to find materials for my son to help him.
That's all I have. It's terrible. Why do I have to be a teacher? I'm not. I work in software engineering. I'm not a teacher. But it's signy grade, so I do know I can form a sentence. But I wish there was a better way. If I could get this material, I'll do it myself. Because I'm, my child, and I don't want him wearing a mask.
Thank you. Walt Penzek.
Good evening. I wasn't gonna speak today until I heard a story tonight that there's kids in your district that are cross-categorical. I don't even know what that is, or special needs or something. Where those kids can't be taken out of class because otherwise they're treated differently. Yet the kid can kick chairs over and do all this crazy stuff. They had to move the whole class to the library. But if my kid goes to school without a mask, they're the ones that are kicked out of class and sent to the principal's office to sit there. Where's your equity in that? Kick around chairs, do whatever they want. But my kid don't wear a mask and they're the evil one. Come on. You guys have, people say, oh, you got a tough job. My ass. You say no mask, and what do you say? Or just follow CDC guidelines, right? Nothing else. CDC guidelines, we're just gonna go with that. And then if the masks work, which they don't, the numbers are low. Pleasant View, one case. So all the kids are wearing masks for one case. Robinwood, your best school that just got nominated, zero cases. All the kids are wearing masks. Well, if the cases go up, what do you blame? COVID. All the people in the neighborhood, oh, everyone's got COVID. And then in the end, when all this stuff turns around, you're just gonna say, well, we just follow CDC guidelines, we're just doing what they do. We went to Door County, we went to the Dells State Fair. I just came from a football game with 100,000 people, no outbreaks. But yet, kids, the opening week of school, we stood out. Some of you have seen us standing in front with the signs saying unmask our kids. We had a lot of parents boo us, a lot of parents agreed with us. We're just saying make it optional. That's all, make it optional. The sad part was, what inspired me was those kids riding on the bus that had to wear a mask. They were cheering us on. They came running off the bus saying, please help us. Please take these masks off of us. And then to go into your studies that you don't wanna talk about, The Lancet, which they're nuts because they actually agree with Dr. Fauci to get away from the coronavirus lab leak theory. But they just came out with a study that said, kids aren't vectors of this. And they also said, because the parents were worried about long-term effects, that's what scared everyone. Because we went from death rates, well, those death rates are three kids, and I believe those three kids died last year, early year. There hasn't been any since. Then it's COVID cases now we went to. Okay, but then when you say, well, kids aren't doing this and that, it just, and now it's like, well, the long-term effects of COVID. The Lancet just came out and said, there's no long-term effects that we know of. But we're, we're doing this to our kids' minds and our mental health, which you just got a huge grant for. I wonder why? Because kids need to see mouths and speak and get rid of this. My kids, all summer, been playing with everybody. They're not here now because they're out playing with their friends. They're in dance class, karate. They're indoors. None of them are wearing masks. So what makes the school so scary?
Thanks, Walt.
I don't wanna be disrespectful. I was gonna keep talking. Because you put my kids in masks for eight hours a day. I think you can listen to us for more than three minutes. This is disgusting that you guys went to this timer. Are you afraid to hear the truth? Come on.
Last one this evening, Jaclyn Gaffney.
Hi. I know some of you would prefer that parents did not continue to share our concerns on this topic, but clearly, it is still a concern. I grew up in Franklin. I graduated from Franklin. And I moved back last year because of the commendable and brave decisions that were being made in this district throughout 2020 around COVID and putting the kids back in schools five days a week. The area I lived in was not. Seeing as though how you are the ones who are imposing the use of medical devices on our children against our will, I think that the burden of proof that they work should be on you. Yet I have not yet seen one study produced by you that proves the cloth masks of our kids wearing does any good. In fact, the map or the grid that you showed from the advisory or the advisory board, excuse me, showed a few weeks ago or about a month ago, it showed peaks and valleys, ebbs and flows, ups and downs of the transmissions or of the positive cases, yet masks were required the whole time. Wouldn't that be flat if masks were working? To remind you, the evidence on the matter is essentially nonexistent. There have been no cluster RCTs conducted and there are no ongoing studies. The leading study on which the CDC bases its mask recommendation found that COVID infection rates in schools requiring masks, and I quote, "was statistically not," excuse me, "was not statistically significant compared with schools where masks use was optional." End quote. Out of the 17 studies cited by the CDC, not one looked at student mask use in isolation from other mitigation measures or against a control, which is how normal science experiments are done. Some even demonstrated that no student masking correlated with low transmission. Yet we continue to mask our kids, who are the least vulnerable group of children from the data. Yet we continue to mask them. Why? We would like to understand what it's about. Is it control? Is it funding? There's federal funding that's being given out to schools that are compliant with these mandates. To put the risk of COVID into perspective, more kids were shot in Chicago so far this year, 302, than died from COVID nationwide, 214. The risk of hospitalization for unvaccinated kids is lower than for vaccinated 50-year-olds. A Johns Hopkins research team analyzed 48,000 children under 18 diagnosed with COVID and found 0% mortality rate in kids without pre-existing conditions such as leukemia. Again, we're talking about the least vulnerable group. When does this end? There will always be risk. COVID isn't going anywhere. I ask you to follow the actual science and unmask our kids. Make them optional.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been approved and seconded or made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, school board announcements. Any announcements by board members? Item eight, school board calendar. Regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, October 13th, 2021 at the ECC at 6 o'clock. Regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, October 27th, 2021 at the ECC at 6 o'clock. Item nine, district administrator update. Dr. Miller, please.
Excuse me, good evening. We're continuing to work through the legislative process to ensure that the dropout rate at the House of Correction doesn't impact our overall score on the district report card. So last week, Mr. Sprague and I went to the Capitol and we testified on behalf of our bill. And I'm pleased to announce that the bill did pass the Assembly Corrections Committee and is now moving on to the Assembly. And we're extremely optimistic it'll move to the governor and will be signed. So that was a really successful day for us. We've initiated our review of our English Language Arts curriculum at the high school. During this first stage of the review, we'll be conducting an analysis of the data related to student achievement. And then we'll begin to plan some action steps for achieving the goals of improving student achievement. Tonight, you'll be hearing from Mr. Heine, our Athletics and Activities Administrator, who'll be sharing some great news about our programs for our students. We've had a successful start to the school year with our activities and sports season. And most recently, we hosted a marching band invite for 11 high schools. And it was, it was really, really good. Finally, as Mr. Sprague had mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, we're very, very proud to announce that Robinwood Elementary has been selected as a National Blue Ribbon School. I'll just tell you a little bit about that. National Blue Ribbon Schools are public and non-public schools that are producing outstanding results for all students. They've demonstrated consistent excellence and made progress in closing gaps in student achievement. The National Blue Ribbon Schools' recognition is part of a larger U.S. Department of Education effort to identify and disseminate knowledge about effective school leadership and promising instructional practices. Robinwood was nominated as an exemplary high-performing school. The award is not only a reflection of the hard work of the staff of Robinwood, but it's also a reflection of the hard work we're doing in the district and a great spotlight for, for our entire school district. So I'm really proud of that and wanted to share that. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Item 10, reports, presentations, and other school board business. Athletic, Athletics and Activities Report. Mr. Heine, please. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. All right. All right, my name is Jordan Heine. I have the pleasure of serving as the Athletics and Activities Director at Franklin High School and in, within Franklin Public Schools. We'll start the presentation just as a recap of the different athletics and activities that we offer. Franklin High School offers 30 different sports programs and 25 different activities. So we're broken down into fall, winter, and spring athletics programs. And then a few advanced to the next slide. Thank you. There is a list of our school-sponsored clubs and activities. And these vary from competition-based to just general interests from students, ranging from meeting every single day if it's something that they're planning or preparing for or competing with, to maybe once a week or twice a month for some of our clubs.
Questions now or later?
If we, don't mind if you wait till the end, that'd be, that'd be great. Looking at our, our results from 2020 and 2021, it was a challenging year for athletics and for activities and for, and for all schools in general. However, all of our athletics and activities participated in some way. And it was heavily modified with, with season modifications and competition modifications. Our athletic results are shown above. The SEC, our conference, did not crown champions in the fall or winter of 2021 because some of our conference schools were not participating. And some moved into the spring option for fall sports. However, for those that did compete and were able to be crowned a conference champion, we had four sports that were crowned conference champions. We had three other sports that were undefeated in conference play, but because they weren't crowned a champion, we technically can't put the number on the banner for that year. We had seven regional championships. The WIAA continued to host most of their postseason play, including regionals and sectionals. We had three team-state qualifiers and one team-state championship. Our girls' dance team defended their jazz state championship title as well. Another note that was extremely exciting was girls' basketball qualifying for the state tournament, beating Oak Creek in the regional final. It was the first time in many, many years. And allowing, you know, that, those moments where those kids could really kind of remove themselves from the drama surrounding COVID and the, the culture that we're growing up in right now. And just to have that moment and, and that memory, I think, was fantastic. So thank you for supporting the continuation of athletics and activities despite health concerns, things like that. Looking on to 2020, 2021 activities, we had a very successful year. All of our activities and clubs had to adjust in some way. There were very varying modifications for any club that would be competition-based. For example, our forensics team, they placed third at the state tournament. Everything with forensics last year was in a virtual manner. So instead of going to a school or a different location to compete, students were submitting videos. They were, had a very specific manner in which they had to submit their video. And it, it was, it led to some things that I think will probably carry forward in terms of like video reflection, different things like that, that our students adapted to. And now we'll make them a better teammate, or better team as we move into this year. And the hope is that most of our activities will return to in-person competitions. The Future Business Leaders of America, we had three students that competed at state. And class of 2021, or, excuse me, class of 2022 senior, there's a typo in that, that slide there. Kush Bonsall is a, was a, was placed first at state for FBLA in the marketing division. Our drama and musical theater departments or productions, we hosted two successful shows. Our students did a phenomenal job of preparing. We had two separate casts. They had to practice at two separate times. And if a student was quarantined or sick, then their backup had to fill in. And when we got to the showtime, we ended up having members of the cast that filled in in roles they had never rehearsed before. And they did a phenomenal job. And I think as we continue to get distance from what was our 2020, 21, 21 school year, those students definitely learned some crucial life skills in terms of adapting, sticking together, you know, doing what they can to, to make sure that they are being a great teammate to those around them. So very, very proud of our students and their resolve and especially our coaches and advisors to, and guiding our students through the challenging year that was last year. Despite our challenges, we have some outstanding data to share that I think really reflects the value and impact of a strong athletics and activities program at the high school level. This data is looking at cumulative GPA for all of our students coming into this school year as of last week. For, you can see from left to right, that it ranges from students involved in zero athletics or activities options or opportunities that we have. And you, as you increase the engagement from the student in athletics and activities, we see a drastic increase in cumulative GPA as well. And again, when I give my recruiting speech to our incoming freshmen, I talk about becoming who you surround yourself with. And we see students that continue to overperform based on their prior performance because they surround themselves with positive teammates. We have exceptional coaches and advisors and adult mentors in place. And essentially, kids kind of start to spiral upwards. And they just continue to get stronger. They have a better connection to school. They have a better connection to their peers. They have adults in the building that they know and trust and have great relationships with. And that becomes evident in their overall cumulative GPA. On a similar note, looking at the impact of engagement on attendance, and this was for attendance throughout last year. I don't believe that any students wanted us to stay healthier than the students that were involved in athletics and activities. If we, you know, I think if our entire community and- If we, you know, I think if our entire community and state, you know, if we were all approaching this the same way that our athletes and our activities members did last year in terms of commitment to each other and doing what needed to be done to continue moving forward, you know, we might be in a different spot right now. But looking at impact and engagement on attendance, again, moving from left to right, athletes, student athletes or activities members continue to demonstrate a strong level of engagement and commitment to their schooling, and students that are heavily involved and highly engaged in their educational experience while at Franklin High School through athletics and activities really just want to be at school, and that is very evident in their attendance rate. Moving on to overall and total participation, last year because of some challenges with modifications that had to be had with some of our competing clubs and activities, we did see a dip in total enrollment in our activities. Early data from 2021, fall of 2021, shows that some of those, most of those are responding, and so we are, I'm monitoring that closely to make sure that students are aware that we are running everything generally as normal or as we would traditionally. You see a dip in 2019, 2020, that was the year that we did not run a spring sport season, so that was shut down before our spring sports could start, hence the dip of overall enrollment in student athletes at that time. Most, if not all, of our sports teams have rebounded, and we're seeing wonderful trends for students that are wanting to get involved in more of our athletics opportunities. That brings us to moving forward into the 2021, 2022 school year. We've had a phenomenal start for our fall sports. You can see some highlights there. Our girls' tennis team is undefeated, they're currently 19-0. As of last week, they were 122 and 4 in overall matches, a very dominant season right now, they're doing a phenomenal job, and we're looking to continue that as we host sectionals on October 6th and have our sights set on an extended postseason with a lot of hard work that goes into that. Football right now is undefeated, we are ranked number one by many media outlets across the state. We have several Division One players in the junior and senior class, and Coach Lewis Brown recently celebrated his 100th win as a head coach, well, as a head coach of Franklin High School. Girls' swim also remains undefeated in duels and in invites, and their postseason will begin towards the end of October. Moving into fall activities, again, just a highlight of our participation numbers, we definitely noticed that our male athletics programs have grown substantially, especially this fall, and it's not that our female athletics programs have reduced in numbers, this is just some things to note here that we've had record participation this fall for those three sports there, football, boys' soccer, and boys' cross-country. We are, I'm super proud and happy to have the return of a student section at our home events. It's a wonderful way to connect with students, it's been great to get them engaged in what we're doing before the school year starts. We had two home games before our first day of school, and that's been phenomenal. We have great student section leaders that are really committed to kind of restarting. We had to take the year off last year, so our seniors, the last time they were at a football game or a basketball game or a sporting event, they were sophomores, and so they've definitely matured, and it's kind of just helping them realize their goals and continue that engagement in driving school spirit. It's been awesome to have the marching band back at our Friday night football games. Last year, I'm sure if you were at any of the games, it was with family and friends, and it was wonderful because it was connected and small and quaint, but to have the marching band roll in again and to watch them perform at halftime and for them to host their invite again has been phenomenal. And that just helps to create this game day experience that I think creates this, you know, kind of starts the train of the school year, and it is definitely rolling at full speed right now. All of our clubs and activities are starting between last week and the next two weeks. Most of our clubs and activities will be up and running. Some don't start until later because they are based on a season. For example, forensics won't start until about mid to late October, their season starts, their competition season starts after holiday break. We have homecoming week coming up, October 3rd to October 9th, and then the other larger event in the fall is our fall play from November 3rd to November 6th, and we're excited to bring War of the Worlds to the Sabre Center. And then looking at some challenges from this year and looking ahead, number one, first and foremost, keeping staff and students healthy. It is our goal every single day to provide athletics and activities opportunities for our kids in a way that's safe, in a way that's not reckless, and our kids definitely want to continue that, so they're working hard and working hard to maintain their own health. Another challenge is just re-engaging clubs and activities or sports that didn't run or didn't run in a traditional manner last year. We had a lot of virtual meetings, we had competitions, and different sorts of clubs and activities that might have culminating events that weren't able to happen because of limitations to large crowds. So really kind of helping kids reimagine what that can look like and re-engaging them so that they understand that they're in the driver's seat and they can, they can make it what they want it to be. On the athletics and activities side, with athletics, we are seeing a severe official shortage across the state right now. Between 2019 and today, we're witnessing between a 30% and 40% decrease in licensed officials across all sports, and so that is something that is certainly challenging. If there's any parents of athletes in the room, you'll note we have frequent game changes, oftentimes late in the day if an official is unwell or they're not able to make it, you know, we'll have cancellations or adjustments to the schedule. Couple on top of that, a severe bus driver shortage as well, and we are, you know, basically every day in the afternoon, we are doing our best to make sure that that day can be executed and that day, that day's events can happen, and so that is certainly providing a challenge as well. We're pushing many of our events back to later in the night because of the driver shortage during that after-school time, or our students are being asked, our teams are being asked to leave prior to 1:30, and we don't really, we try to minimize that as much as we can because we don't want them missing class. And those are external limitations, and then internally, facilities limitations. Again, looking at our growing programs, they're growing, you know, in order to run an effective athletics program with off-season stuff, with open gyms, different things like that, making sure that we are keeping in mind the importance of facilities and square footage with facilities and court space. That's probably the number one challenge that I have right now is fitting our teams in with our community and rec programs, with our youth programs, and I also look at, you know, our phenomenal tennis team and not having courts on any of our campuses is challenging, and we're successful despite that, and I would welcome, you know, being able to, you know, present any sort of rationale as to why I think our kids would thrive with additional facility support. So those are our successes, our challenges so far. Welcoming any questions or comments at this time.
Mrs. Wukowski, please.
I didn't see intramurals on your list, is that, you did mention in the report that when you have cut sports, that that tends to create a need for participation some other way?
Yes.
Intramurals, who handles intramurals?
We don't, right now, we don't have intramurals. And so in my, in my report, I mentioned that that would be a method of kind of directing kids, if, for example, for some of our cut sports, like volleyball, where we were routinely cutting about 30, between 30 and 40 girls especially, it's very popular, because we don't have enough to support four or five levels of volleyball. If we had an intramural program, that would be some, so that's something that we can explore. The challenge is, is again, court space, because our volleyball teams routinely practice between 3:00 and 9:00 p.m. with between six different levels between the two genders. So it's a challenge, we'd have to, we'd have to figure out where is that going to fit in our facilities calendar, but there's no doubt with volleyball, with basketball, I would even argue baseball and softball would be sports that if we had an intramural league, we'd have high student participation, and we'd also have students participating that don't normally try those sports, it's more just of a recreation-based activity for them.
How do you utilize the middle school, or, I mean, it's a huge building that we added, does that not impact you at all, your needs?
It does. So for, for example, with, we have one court at the high school, so that if we have teams that practice for an hour and a half or two hours, basically, one, for example, I'll take our volleyball program. So our girls will practice at the high school, and they're in there until about 8:30 at night, and then our boys will practice all three levels at the same time in the middle school gym, and so they're there from about 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So it definitely helps. Middle school has their own programming that runs until 5:30, so after around 6:00 o'clock is generally, if that's available, we'll get over there, and having three courts side by side definitely allows the entire program to practice at the same time.
You did mention that we can't host any regional championships, can that gym be used for that?
The middle school gym, I believe we have to have a seating, I'd have to check the seating capacity. In terms of the, you know, the floor space, yes, we would, it'd be more advantageous to host it there because we'd be able to pull both sets of bleachers out all the way at the high school right now, because when we're, for sports like volleyball and basketball, we can't pull the bleachers out, and so that leaves seating.
I understand that, but we have other facilities that are still part of the districts. We would look at that as a way to solve some of those issues. When you said we had larger numbers of male participation, are we talking, I don't know, 10, 20? I mean, what, can you explain that, 5% more?
Absolutely. So for football, our previous high was around like 145, so this year we are at, I just had the number on the screen, I think we're at 163. So that's, that certainly brings a challenge, you know, when you have 20 extra student athletes that need helmets, shoulder pads, jerseys, things like that. We've been able to adjust this year, and looking at another sport like boys' soccer, the previous high, we're about 5, 5% to 10% more on that one this year as than we've been in the past. Boys' cross-country, which is another one that's very large this year, we're about 15% to 20% larger.
Can I follow up on that question, just real quick while we're on the topic? Could you predict those increases by sort of looking at what was coming down the pipe in youth feeder teams, and do you see a similar upward trajectory when you look at what's going on in youth activities in Franklin?
Yes, I, with cross-country, it was difficult because our cross-country programs didn't run last year at the, at the middle school.
Sure.
So that was, that was a unique, but we're also seeing, I believe, students, when they realize how fleeting their high school experience can be, you know, when I, when I would talk with seniors of the class of 2020 and having a season taken away, the seniors that were single-sport athletes were the ones that had the greatest impact in terms of their emotional health and, and I don't want to say regrets, but wishing that they would have maybe done more. So we are seeing increased participation, for example, on our cross-country team from sophomores through seniors that weren't engaged before, but now are using that as a method of whether they're getting in shape for their next sport, or they just want to be around the team, that kind of stuff. For programs like football, where we have a very strong youth program, we can see those trends. We still see more that join as freshmen than they maybe were involved with as a seventh or eighth grade athlete, but yes, in terms of, we would expect the trends to continue to grow.
Is there a chance football would ever become a cut sport?
I, in my own personal opinion, I don't, I don't think any of our sports should be cut sports. If I could, I would find a way to support that if, if we can't field, you know, for example, for a varsity football team, we have, routinely have 80 to 90 athletes dress, only 11 can play, which shows that there's, there's a pull to that program, that it's not, not about playing time, it's about being part of something that's built on success and pride and, and I don't anticipate, I don't, I don't want to create cut sports, it's just a matter of, for some of our sports that have limited jerseys or scheduling or facilities, that just gets to be very challenging.
How close are we to, we talked about Title IX, how, I know the number's skewed toward male, and I assume that's largely because we have 156 kids in football.
Yes.
Who I assume are all male, but maybe they're not. How close are we to those numbers?
So in the, in the board report I gave you, I believe, the last five years, this year, the 2020 and 2021, excuse me, that would be the last school year, we did see a larger increase in our male sport participation. So that definitely skewed the numbers more heavily towards male. At the same time, we also saw more, a greater imbalance between male and female students at Franklin High School. Now, I believe, we just got our third Friday numbers, we're growing to about 3% more males than females. So the trends are growing smaller in the male-female student ratio than they are in the athletics ratio. It just, when we have a team that is kind of uncapped, such as football, and we go from 135 to 160, it just, that, that tends to skew the numbers.
What I'm asking is how much can the imbalance be before it becomes something that's a, that's a Title IX issue?
Absolutely, yep. So with Title IX compliance, are the, we are in compliance if we're offering equal opportunity, and we certainly want to, we have not reduced opportunity, but we certainly want to make sure that we're supporting the growth of our other programs, particularly because our football program is so large and, and, you know, if we took that out, and maybe that's some data that we can, we can look at, if we took out football, like what that would look like in terms of balancing those numbers back.
I don't want to artificially balance the numbers, as long as we're, as long as we're offering, as long as we're offering as much as we can, there's, there's little more that we can do, and nor should we, I don't think.
Right. We, and we can focus on growing, you know, doing what we can to grow our, our female athletics programs, and, and whether it's male or female, what we noticed over the last, what I've noticed in my time serving this role, anytime we have a coaching transition, we see a drop in numbers, and then over the next two or three years, they start to grow back up as, whether that's changes in expectations, whether it's loss of, you know, that relationship with a head coach, different things like that. So that's something that I've noticed, and I'm trying to, if we keep coaches in the program and we can retain them and, and, you know, allow them to do their, their jobs, they definitely grow those numbers back up, and we haven't, we don't see numbers declining when we, year over year, when we have a new coach, it's just that initial hit.
Can you talk about numbers in the middle school, and I know, I know you have some numbers here, but how much maybe they've grown over the last, I guess, couple of years, and maybe it's tough with last year, but especially since we have a new facility, it seems like there's more and more activities, which I think is fabulous, but maybe you could talk a little bit about that?
Yep, absolutely. So last year was an anomaly, we didn't, we were not able to run, for example, our, our middle school cross-country team routinely has like 200 students participating in grade six through eight. Similar with track, it's always a very large program. When we were able to utilize the new gym, we added two different, we added another, an additional level to each of our seventh and eighth grade basketball teams, so we have a kind of a gold and a yellow team for that, so that's brought forward an additional 15 to 16 opportunities at each grade level per gender to participate in the sport. Likewise, the same thing happened for girls' volleyball, and we're offering every sport that our conference offers at the middle school level, and we are starting to look at potentially piloting a boys' volleyball program at the middle school. It's not necessarily supported by their conference yet, but it could be one of those things that we would start as intramural play and then look to build kind of a makeshift schedule instead of having a conference schedule. But overall, the participation rates at the middle school in terms of the new, the But overall, the participation rates at the middle school, in terms of the new, the old facility to the new, I would argue almost double because we added a grade with sixth grade. And we also now have the space to be able to have two teams practice at the same time, which is very helpful.
Anybody else have any questions?
So I know you went virtual on some of the, you know, audience participation was all virtual. Are you, what are you carrying forward going forward as far as being able to view and performances virtually?
So our, our goal is to host a hybrid. So we have lots of fans that have grown used to the Saber Roar broadcasting our varsity events. Last year, we broadcasted all levels. This year, we are doing as many varsity events as we can. And if we have the, the staffing and the capacity to, to run the lower levels, we do that as well. So almost all of our varsity events, and, and as long as there's not multiple events on the same night, will be broadcast on the Saber Roar. And those will be live as well as being able to host in person. And then our goal with our theater, for example, our theater productions would be to host, again, an online format for those that are maybe out of town or, or it's not safe for them to be participating or attending in person, but also offering in-person attendance as well.
Have you done any surveying as far as the quality of those experiences? I did, I think, view the play last year was not a real, I don't know, any feedback?
We, we get feedback frequently. And we're doing, I would, I would say we're doing the best we can. I'm, I, I love media production and it's a hobby of mine, but I'm not a professional. So we're, we're doing the best we can in terms of offering the best picture quality and, and trying to make sure that the stream is, is repeatable and seamless so that, you know, people know where they're, where they're supposed to go for our feeds. For an event like our theater productions, we have very specific vendors that we have to use because of copyright issues with our performances. So we were forced to use the vendor that the copyright house are the, the.
Publishing house.
Publishing house, yeah, thank you. We were forced to use that company. And they were kind of learning on the fly. We were an early participant in some of those things and there's certainly bugs in the system.
Then just one last thing. So you're getting this wall of fame, right? Some capital improvement that we funded, where does that add?
Yes. So in the, in the entrance of the, the high school, the main gym entrance, we just underwent a refresh where we repaired the floors, lighting, fresh paint. And then because of our recent success, if you can remember, in that hallway, our sectional and regional plaque, championship plaques kind of extend now and they're almost down by, they're starting to extend down by the tech ed rooms. And so realizing that that is somewhat unsustainable and it just turns into a wall of, you know, like a half mile of, of plaques on the wall, we converted to a digital Hall of Fame, which can all be accessible via website. And we have seventy-inch touchscreens in the entryway where it can be interactive with fans and they can select based on year, based on name, based on sport for that Hall of Fame. And in the future, is that, this continues to be developed on the backend with our, our vendor for that. We'll also have our yearbooks that'll be archived and available there as well as our record boards.
And that's complete or in process?
The construction phase is complete. So as you walk in there, you'll notice it's bright and beautiful and clean. And the website developments, we're still working with the vendor to make sure that everything is accurate and uploaded.
Okay. I do recall that you had made a request of foundation for some similar video interaction thing in the Sabre Center? Whatever happened to that?
That, that, we basically withdrew the, the request, yeah.
This is something different then.
I have a couple of questions if, if you're finished. I'm just curious, are all coaches and advisors of athletics and activities compensated to some extent financially?
We, we have some unfunded activities that are, that are volunteer advisors. We rely heavily on volunteers for all of our programs. I would say almost, I, I would, every, every sport has at least one volunteer coach that they just donate their time to. Either they just love the, love the, the sport or, you know, we have coaches that kind of grew up with that level of team and they, and they get involved in that way. But yeah, we, we rely on volunteers and volunteer advisors for some of our activities.
Do you have any oversight over volunteer participation in terms of coaching? Or is that, is that left to the discretion of head coaches and head advisors?
The, when I work with our head coaches, they will, they'll bring me, hey, I, I, this person wants to volunteer coach for us. We go through the volunteer coaching or the volunteer application process and they follow most of the requirements for our, for example, for our coaches, like they'll be WIA certified, they have to take rules exams, things like that.
What relationship do your, especially your athletic coaches have with the various youth development teams in the community? Is there an expectation that they be involved with them? Is it sort of just a tacit understanding, unwritten rule?
There is, it, it, it benefits the program when they're involved. The most challenging part again is when there's a turnover in head coach. You know, right now, our head coaches that have youth programs are very much involved and they're providing, you know, oversight in terms of just, you know, helping our youth programs with game strategy, with plays, different things like that. Our most successful programs that continue to grow and have success every year have a high level of, of head coach interaction with the youth program. And it's, they're not compensated for that. It's just a matter of, that's, that's kind of what it takes to be a highly competitive program nowadays.
And then my last questions are about, your report to us included some information on fundraising and booster groups. And I'm just curious what the, you mentioned, I think that there are eight 501(c)(3) booster groups in the district. I don't, I might be have that number wrong. What's the difference between the fundraising that's done by the booster groups and then you had another section just on fundraising in general? Can you help me understand how fundraising is managed?
Yep. So at the, at the high school level, we have what we call activity account. So it's basically a school-based account. Each team will have one that if a team through the school does a fundraiser, for example, we think of, of one here, let's say the cross-country team holds a car wash. They don't have a booster club per se. They host a car wash, the proceeds from that car wash get deposited into their activity account, which stays here in the district. And the, so we would, we would spend those funds on team needs and, and things that are maybe above and beyond what the district budget would provide. Teams frequently purchase like warm-up tops, team meals, you know, if there's an away game, they do subs for the bus, different things like that that add to the student experience. And then the booster groups, so if they're a nonprofit, essentially, we, we allow three fundraisers for our school-based accounts. And then the booster clubs can also run three. And the, the biggest value of our booster groups is they, they definitely are very generous with, with raising funds, but it's the volunteer and the parent networking and just the consistency in developing that, that engagement with our programs, that's the, the most valuable part.
And then what kind of oversight is there for those booster groups in terms of making sure that they're complying with all the rules regarding running and reporting of a 501(c)(3) or is it sort of expressly, this is our lane, this is your lane?
So I meet with our, our booster club presidents or their board members annually. And we talk through what they're planning for fundraisers this year, how they're planning to use, you know, district images or district likeness in their fundraising. And then essentially confirming that their 501(c)(3) status is still valid and they're, they're following up on paperwork. In terms of them, you know, submitting all their paperwork and maintaining their status, that's up to the, the organization to do that.
Okay. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just a follow-up then. So they, they donate then to the activity fund then, or how was that funding?
Yes. So whether it's through donations back into the activity account or, or purchases of equipment, things like that.
Donated then?
Yes. Yeah. So, and, and if you're, if you want specific numbers, I can, I can share those with, you know, our last two to three years with what our booster groups have committed.
I would like follow up on that maybe later. Email is fine.
Okay.
And you also mentioned, I think, sponsorship, game sponsorship now is kind of a new thing you developed?
Yes.
What's the magnitude of that?
Yeah, absolutely. So two years ago, we partnered with the foundation to raise money to renovate our weight room. So we needed new weight room equipment. And the foundation worked with us on securing game sponsors for our football games. So in, in exchange for our donation, we would have representative from that organization do the coin flip. We would put their logo on our, our game day rosters for that game only. And it was just a way of inviting and welcoming community partners to, to help, can, you know, give back to build our programs. And all of our sports programs use our weight room. This year, we did not do that in 2020, 2021 because we didn't have home fans or full fan attendance. This year, we've had one game. It was our, our first conference home game. We had Billy Sims barbecue that they, they donated. And then they did like a student kicking game and, and Billy Sims, the Heisman Trophy winner came and he was the coin flipper. So he got to meet and greet with the kids and coaches and stuff. So it's just a, a manner of connecting with establishments and organizations in our communities and welcoming them into being part of our, kind of our student culture and part of our athletics and activities experience.
As a follow-up on that, when we're the, we were the game of the week on twenty-four against Fond du Lac. And there was a lot of advertising and that sort of thing in the, on the visitor sideline that I'm guessing that was just visible to the TV as well as the camera went along. Are we, is the district compensated for that? Is there?
When, when we work with like, like a TV broadcast, things like that, that would be part of their, their broadcast. So in exchange for them broadcasting the game, they, you know, they have vendors there that would help offset their costs so that they can provide that service for free.
I have a question, not directly athletic related, but you talk in the report a little bit about your FIAD just program growth, just in the classes. Is that students opting to take more than the required FIAD classes? Like how do we go up by like a thousand students over a year?
Yes. So we are, we're seeing an increased growth in students that want to take FIAD beyond their required classes. We have more electives now than we had two years ago and three years ago. We're seeing increased participation in our strength and conditioning courses and we're adding sections for that. So I, I think in general, I think based on the data and based on conversations with our, our FIAD staff, you know, students are interested in being active. And it's, they, we have a highly engaging FIAD staff and they do a great job of, you know, just that constant recruiting and kids love to be around them. And Gold Block has also helped. We have activities and wellness activities that kids do during Gold Block and that kind of introduces them sometimes to some of the other opportunities that they might not, they might not see just in their required classes.
So you can go to Gold Block and do FIAD activity during that time?
Yes, yep. So during our Gold Block section of, of time, our FIAD staff will offer, you know, weight training, sometimes they do yoga, sometimes it's, there's swim activities. It's, it's a kind of a wide variety of things and kids have the option to elect into those.
Well, thank you for this program and thank you for what you're doing. If you are one person managing all this, I'm super impressed. That's a huge job. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hein, appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Item B, ad hoc committee for improving community communication and engagement update. Mr. Persky, I know we had a meeting several weeks ago.
Yeah, actually, it was back in August, we got together, a number of our board members to have an ad hoc committee meeting. What we kind of came up with was we'd like to find a different way to interact or not, an additional way to interact with the community so we can hear more from the community what their needs and ideas are. I think what we figured out was that there needs to be more two-way communication. And so we were just kind of starting the brainstorming of how we could make that happen. Some of the ideas that we had were kind of to find some themes and kind of have conversations and figure out what, what the needs are and then kind of build on that for how we could meet those needs. But this being our first meeting, it was just sort of our, our, kind of our brainstorming. I don't know for any of you who are there, if you want to add anything to that.
No, I don't want anything to add. We brainstormed, we, we need to meet again to come up with some specific suggestions to start getting these ideas rolled out.
So we had a, we have another meeting, I think, set for October to kind of rehash a little bit and figure out a more strategic goal of how to make it all happen.
All right, any further discussion? All right, the treasurer's report is available in Board Docs Library. School Board Liaison Reports, Personnel and Policy, Policy 5430, Suspension and Expulsion of Pupils. Dr. Khan?
So we are going to review two policies. So the policy that's 5430 is for suspension, expulsion of the pupils. This policy was last reviewed in 2014. If you open that, there has been minor edits to the language of the policy. Removing, replacing some of the words from cumulative to consecutive, et cetera. And we also added the specific language for Wisconsin statutes for expulsion of the proceedings to the policy as such. So if any, everybody got a chance to already review that, I'd like to have a motion to...
All right, so we're looking for a motion to approve the revised policy 5430 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, the move, the motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
So you're saying, just a, so I think I heard you say then that the only really change is you added the fire, possession of a firearm is automatically grounds for expulsion. Is that correct? Which is per state statute, is that right?
Right.
That was the only really policy change, otherwise it's just word.
The next policy.
We may have to vote.
All right, any further discussion? All right, there's a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And Personnel Policy, Policy 3650, Dangerous Weapons on School Premises, also an action item. Dr. Khan?
So this policy, 3650, was adopted in 1994 and was last reviewed in 2015. We are recommending a significant change to the language of the policy with the removal of the administrative, administrative rules because that pertains to a separate section of the board policy of four thousand and five thousand, where students and employees are dealt with, with according to that policies as such. Also, we are recommending to, because right now with the word weapon and we're just kind of making it general because it can be anything, you know, from a knife, some people can, you know, or it can be a, so rather than specifying different words for each weapon, we are just using one word as weapon as such to have everything inclusive. And what is allowed on the school premises, when it is allowed, for example, if it is a, only for the purpose of, for the cooking class, for example, or any drama, any play, anything like that, that can be brought to the school premises with approval of the principal or the, who the assigned administrator is for that, and then it has to be taken off. So that's what we are recommending. So that's what we are recommending for the policy to include a generalized term for the weapons as such. So if everybody got a chance to look at the policy, I'd like to again bring a motion, please.
All right, so we're looking for a motion to approve revised policy 3650 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Kahn. Board Liaison Reports. Does anybody have Mrs. Wukowski, please?
Yes, I did attend the SWSA meeting, I think it was last Tuesday. I did share the, some of the information with all board members. Did you see that?
Yes, thank you, Linda.
Basically covering an update on COVID, some legislative update and then media training. Is there anything we want to discuss or, I don't know what we do with that information, but is this a good way to share that? I'm just looking for some feedback.
I appreciated getting it in that manner, yes.
Okay.
I, I find your.
Anyone else? I love it when you send those because I think they're very informative. The information from that meeting is usually very timely and informative.
Thanks. I want to also ask you about the legislative update because there are, I think WASP also is sending legislative updates. I don't know if everybody, everybody does get those, right? And there is, I believe there's some concern about the, the number of bills currently taking, they're taking up and the degree of, you know, they're just the topics that they're coming up with. Are there any concerns that we have as board members? How do we review those? You know, I don't have these right in front of me right now, but like, you know, human growth and development needing, needing to notify parents, some of these things are kind of unfunded mandates. They require us to do things that maybe we don't think we want to do. Do, do we want to take a more proactive approach with these things with our legislators? I guess I believe it up to Judy to give some guidance on some of the, the nature of some of these things we're seeing coming through.
I think a, a good approach to this might be that if you and I, Ms. Wukowski, kind of talk about those bills and decide together if there's something we might bring to the board to just kind of weigh in on so that as we work through SWSA, we can take a position on behalf of this board regarding those bills. So I, I think it might be wise for the two of us to kind of talk about the ones that we might think will advance and we may want to go to a hearing about or, or present testimony on. But I think it's difficult to just kind of throw them all out here because many of these bills will go nowhere. So I think we have to watch them, you and I, and see how they're progressing and then bring them to this board to decide if we want to engage in that.
Okay.
I know in the past, this is previous iteration of this board, we were talking about becoming more involved in the, in the legislative process and I, I for one am interested in that. But yeah, I think there has to be a.
Well, perhaps it's the three of us then that kind of talk about what this full board might top, engage in more discussion about.
I'm just curious, SWSA as part of our membership in that group, does sort of act as a legislative representative to an extent, right? So this would be in addition. Okay, thank you.
Right, but we need to be in tune with our board.
I understand.
With our board also might be. And, you know, that it's a wide ranging of things and I don't want to, I want to make sure that you're kind of at least following along a little bit because this could come out of nowhere, some of these things and they can be pretty.
Well, you should always feel free, at least, I'll speak for myself and you can nod or shake your head, but I, I don't mind when you forward emails and then, you know, can read through them.
Okay.
Yes, no.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I will continue to do that.
Thank you, Linda, for doing that. We appreciate it.
All right, as Dr. Miller said, we went to the Assembly Committee on Corrections and our bill was passed or passed through committee with a nine to one vote, Assembly Bill 216. This has, this bill, same bill has been on the floor of the Senate and passed, I think unanimously, but I'm not positive. So again, we're, we're, we're hopeful that Assembly Bill 216 will pass through the assembly and be signed by the governor. So that's a experience that has been two years in the making, so.
And just so you're aware, if, if it does pass, we won't see it on the next report card. I believe it would be the one after that. And that's how the bill was written in order to give the department time to make adjustments that would be necessary to reflect that change in the law. So DPI has some things to do once a law is passed. So it would not be the next report card, but I believe the one after. And Dr. Mo is nodding her head because she knows.
Does the language in this bill specifically refer to our district or does it cover all districts in a similar situation?
All districts in a similar situation. I believe there's 14 of them, but it might be 11.
I think 11.
I think it's amazing that that process has taken two years, which is basically kind of an obvious correction of administrative matter, but they can put together these list of legislative things and push them through with virtually no, no input from DPI is, is just amazing. I just put it at that.
I, I agree and I, I will say that this has been, we were largely timing with COVID because we went to committee right before, right before COVID hit and it, it's, it got stuck and, and now it's, now it's going further. So I think the process was longer than it should be, but the process was longer than it should be, it should have been to begin with. Any other Board Liaison Reports?
Yep, I had a Board Liaison visit at Robinwood last week. Met with Mr. Nelson and toured the building, got to visit a few classrooms. Pretty incredible to see the work that the kids are already doing and only the, whatever, I guess last week was the second, third week of school. And kind of set up with Mr. Nelson going back and kind of monitoring their school improvement plan through the course of the year. So it's a good first visit.
All right, anybody else? All right, Item D, School and Community Engagement Reports. Mrs. Sapersky, I'm, I think you might have something.
Why did you say that? Yeah, well, I mean, there's been a lot of things going on, football games and athletic events and things, I don't know what everybody's been able to get to. I, I personally attended my first swim meet last year. Those swim meets were all virtual, so I was in-person first swim meet for the first time this last week, which was really boring, but kind of exciting. Every once in a while was exciting. But then also we did host the marching band invite this past weekend, which was super incredible and we got the, the people who came were highly praising Franklin for our facilities and for our, you know, welcoming attitude and everything, all the schools and the parents and everybody who came. There was a lot of really positive feedbacks. That was pretty exciting as well. And I just want to notice too, or note as well that the robotics recycling drive is happening this week on Saturday. So if you have anything out in your shed, you should bring that out to the recycling.
They also take computer mainframes. This is how I get rid of.
Oh, did you take computer stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, not TVs.
I can't, I don't think monitors.
Check your, your district newsletter because it's in there with a list of what you can and can't, but I think it was like only TVs that you can. There's a lot of things you can drop off, so. Yeah, so it was, it's been, it's been a fun week. I think I'm still sunburned from Saturday.
And I want to commend the district consignment sale, two of our board members, the district administrator, I saw them there. Always a good, always a good event. We held it at the middle school this year as a fundraiser for the education foundation and it was, many community members were happy to have that back up and running again.
I did get a chance to attend the band event.
Yeah, it was really neat.
It's just fabulous. You just, every, what, 15 minutes, a new performance happens in front of you.
It's not what band was like when I was in band.
No?
It was much cooler than my memory. Band was great when I was in band. This was really great there.
I was never in band, so I don't, I don't have anything to compare to, but it's pretty cool. And it, it just, it was really nice to highlight Franklin. You know, many people, a lot of people said they'd never been here before and to see the facilities and everything was very much a Franklin proud kind of moment.
All right, anybody else? I, I've been to several events as well, as many as I can get to at least. It's nice to see events in person. And, you know, I know that we had the, Mr. Hein here today and it's just great to see kids and activities and see the community together.
I also did go to the high school, back to school night. I know some of you have high school kids, but you didn't find a lot of value in that, but.
I didn't, I found a lot of value in it.
You did, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I forgot that that happened since our last meeting.
Yeah.
Right, so and I, it was interesting to, I think the message is very clear, you know, that we are getting these kids' career in college right. That's very clear in that opening statement. And I did get a chance to, I learned about the Gold Block. I hadn't really had any idea what Gold Block does, but it's, it's amazing that they can book time with their teacher, you know, through an app. You know, use the technology there, I think is, is pretty amazing. And to have that relationship with one teacher for all four years is, is pretty neat. I also sat in on the in-roads program and you, and you're in these meetings with other parents, you can hear what parents are expecting in some of these programs and how important things are to them. So it was a good, a good way to kind of check in and, and see how high school has changed or not changed in the last 15 years that I've had kids in the programs.
I find a lot of value because I can sort of anticipatorily embarrass my daughter. She's not there, but I can just plant little seeds, little seeds.
I actually was really impressed that night with the staff. Everyone was out in the hall like during passing periods and stuff and if you even had the slightest look of, maybe you didn't know or like, my husband and I were early and we were just going to stand outside, I think we were asked four or five times, do you know where you're going? Can I help you find where you're going? What are you looking for? It's like, no, really, we know where we're going, but just it was very, it wasn't, I don't mean that in a rude way, it was very welcoming. Like, everybody was out there, everyone was standing in the hallway, saying hello, offering support. I was really impressed with the staff that night.
And I did, there are two new teachers in the program that I was in and they were, I'm amazed at how they are so glad to be in Franklin and some have come from other districts. Their enthusiasm for being here is also, is also very, very positive, so. It was good. We're doing good things, I think.
All right, thank you, everyone. I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851D to review district threat of violence drills.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I think we need a roll call vote, Mrs. Larson.
We do. Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Wukowski?
Yes.
Mr. Alex Ljungdravich?
Yes.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Yes.
Dr. Kahn?
Yes.
Dr. Beer?
Yes.
And I vote aye. We are in closed session at 7:43.
Thank you. I may need a few minutes. All right, Item 13, School Board Member Comments.
I love having Robinwood here tonight.
Yeah.
And having students back and hearing from students and staff. That's really been missing, I think, with COVID and understandably so, but I, I just thought it was great to have, you know, representation again.
Yep. I was going to say the same thing. I really enjoyed seeing the kids again.
Was that a happy accident that they were, that they were here and they got?
It was. It was a happy accident. It really was. Well planned. Yeah.
So, and is this really the, their report of this, their school improvement plan? Is this one of the series of meetings where we, our school comes?
Yeah, so each school will come and they will take an aspect of their school improvement plan connected to how it's being played out in the classroom and have children share information with you about that.
We're going to report on, when we make our liaison reports about our school, we're going to report on how they're, how they're doing in their.
That's a separate thing.
Yes, and then Dr. Mo is going to do regular reports on the plan, including what's happening in the schools.
Okay, so that's different than last year.
It is different.
Okay.
I can explain more of that in my communication to the board.
Okay. Who's, who is, which one is at school? Who was, who's the liaison?
I believe Jan is liaison for Robinwood, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
I also have one other comment. I know we have a scheduled reports that come to us every, every year and I did pull that, so Judy has put that out there in terms of this month this report comes. And I, I think it'd be helpful to maybe organize them in the library so that there's a folder so you can look for that report and then get the previous year's report so you can maybe make comparisons.
I know for me that would be helpful because oftentimes I'm, I just send an email to the person who's providing the report and ask for last year's, just to know.
Have you checked it recently? Because I know that Ms. Wususki was working on doing that.
In the library.
But maybe she hasn't yet because she had, she had told me that that was an interest of the board members to have the last two years of reports accessible in the library.
Yeah, I know, we've talked about that in the past.
I'll make note of it, but she may have done some work on it, but possibly.
It looks like actually now that I pop in there, yes. So let's spend some time looking through that and see if there's anything.
See what's missing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also, it would be helpful if there is any, you know, numbers information, if there was a chart of prior year right in the report, you know, like three years of data as opposed to having to go look at last year's. You know, if you're reporting numbers and just, you know, put the current year and last year, maybe the other two years. It's just a matter of including a table, adding the next year, dropping one off.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree. I like to look for trends as opposed to a moment in time.
And context. And my last thing is it would be, when we review these chunks of operations like the whole co-curricular, that we get some kind of budget information also to give us some context and.
Okay.
You know, this is really our chance to, I, I'm sure Jim would tell us that this is part of your, beginning of your budget review. Whenever, when these people come before you, this is when you're making decisions that would impact the budget and maybe we need to have some context as to, well, how many dollars are we talking about here? When he comes and gives us this report. So those three things suggest that we need to work on. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Future agenda items, Wisconsin School Board Recognition Week, Seclusion and Restraint Report, At-Risk Report, Community and Recreation Department Report, Budget Document Review Discussion, Southwood Glen Elementary School Presentation, Annual Health Report, Employee Handbook Updates, Enrollment and Staffing Report, 2021-22 Budget Approval and District Administrator Goals. We will have a busy October. All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned at 8:05. Thank you.
Thank you.